We're gonna start reading at verse number one. Acts two, verse number one. "When the day of Pentecost had fully come," or some, like Mr. Darby would translate here, "was accomplishing," so it was taking place. "They were all with one accord in one place." Verse two. "And suddenly there came a sound from heaven as of a rushing mighty wind, and it filled the whole house where they were sitting. Then there appeared to them divided tongues as of fire, and one sat upon each of them; and they were all filled with the Holy Spirit, and began to speak with other tongues as the Spirit gave them utterance. And there were dwelling in Jerusalem Jews devout men from every nation under heaven; and when this sound occurred the multitude came together and were confused, because everyone heard them speak in his own language. Then they were all amazed and marvelled, saying to one another, 'Look, are not all these who speak Galileans? And how is it that we hear each in our own language in which we were born? Parthians, and Medes, and Elamites, those dwelling in Mesopotamia, Judea, Cappadocia, Pontus, and Asia, Phrygia, and Pamphylia, Egypt, and the parts of Libya adjoining Cyrene, visitors from Rome, both Jews and proselytes, Cretans and Arabs? We hear them speaking in our own tongues the wonderful works of God.' So they were all amazed and perplexed, saying to one another, 'Whatever could this mean?' Others mocking said, 'They are full of new wine.'" And we'll observe the response to that in a moment. Now, the day of Pentecost, as we mentioned last night, was that feast of weeks, the fiftieth day after the feast of first fruits. And our Lord was crucified on Passover, raised on first fruits, and now fifty days later, about ten days after the ascension, I believe, because after the resurrection, He showed Himself alive by many infallible proofs. So if my mouth's right there, you can straighten me out if I'm off. But anyway, the Lord is now back in heaven at the right hand of the Father, and He poured out the Holy Spirit as He promised. Now, the Bible, of course, has a great deal to say about the Holy Spirit. There are many hundreds, if not thousands, of references to Him in Scripture, starting at Genesis one, verse two, "that the Spirit abode upon the face of the waters." So, we know the Holy Spirit is a divine person, co-equal with the Lord Jesus, and co-equal with the Father, that He's a member of the triune Godhead. There's one God, the Bible tells us. In the Old Testament, it says, "Hear, O Israel, the Lord our God is one Lord." In Deuteronomy six, the famous Shema, that confession the Jews make to this day, at least in Orthodox and Hasidic circles. But in any case, the Lord is said in the Old Testament over and over to be one. And yet, in the New Testament, we're told that as well. First Timothy two says, "There's one God and one mediator between God and man, the man Christ Jesus." But we know God is in three persons, that they each are equal and part of the same essence. There aren't three Gods, but yet there are three distinct personalities within that Godhead. I can't explain it or understand it fully, but then, if I could, He wouldn't be much of a God, would He? And that's what marks out idols, as we'll see sometimes in the book of Acts, is men have very simple, almost human-like in many cases, Gods. You know, that, they say, is the attraction of a lot of people to Islam, is its simplicity. Because they say, "Well, you know, it's very easy to understand. There's one God, and you just submit to Him." That's what Muslims are. They're ones submitted to the will of Allah. But the problem is, the God they're submitting to is not a God of love, much less a God of holiness. He's not a God who's provided an effective way to deal with sin. He's not a God who can promise forgiveness of sins. In fact, you can't even know, in their theology, whether you'll be in paradise, because it's all the will of God. He predetermines who is there and who isn't. So you must submit, you must do the five pillars, but you never know if God loves you and will receive you into paradise. He might just as well destroy you. Whereas, the God of the Bible is so rich and so vast that we can't fully comprehend Him, but some things are clear about Him. He so loved the world that He gave His only-begotten Son, that whosoever believes in Him should not perish but have everlasting life. That this God, who is so immense, higher than the heavens, nevertheless came down to earth and became a baby, and that He went to the cross in the person of His Son and died there for us, and of course, has now given His Spirit to indwell us. Now, many times in the Bible, in the Old Testament, and even in the Gospels, you can see the whole people. And He would come upon people and empower them for service. Not everyone that the Spirit came upon in the Old Testament was even necessarily a believer, in our sense of the term. And I would cite Saul, son of Kish, in First Samuel, as a prime example of that. A man who sometimes had the Spirit operating upon him, and even doing signs through him, so that they said, "Is Saul among their prophets?" But Saul wasn't a man who obeyed the Lord. In the end, he was a rebel, and rebellion, as First Samuel fifteen tells us, is as the sin of witchcraft. And he died under the judgment of God in First Samuel twenty-eight. So, the Spirit would come and go upon people, like Samson. And when Samson was disobedient and broke all the different statutes of the Nazarid vow, the Spirit left him. But He came upon him once more at the event of his death, of course. Now, what is here is gonna be different, though. It's not going to be the Spirit coming upon the apostles for a time to equip them for a certain job. Now, the Holy Spirit is coming to indwell them, to actually live inside them. And I wanna just... "Another helper, he gives to their comforter, that he may abide just forever, the Spirit of truth, whom the world cannot receive, because it neither sees him nor knows him; but you know him, for he dwells with you and will be in you." Please notice the preposition. They already were familiar with the Spirit of God's ministry. They had already seen the Spirit working through the Lord Jesus. They had already participated, because when the Lord Jesus sent out the twelve, and also when He sent out the seventy, two different occasions, He gave them power over unclean spirits and to heal people. So they actually participated in these things of the Spirit and in His power. And He says here, "He dwells with you and will be in you." Now, it's different to have something with you and have something in you. The other morning, I woke up with a bad headache, and I remembered, I have ibuprofen with me. Now, if I then proceeded to try and teach the study that I was doing at the time with some men, and I said, "I have here my bottle of ibuprofen. It's right here in front of me on the table." Would that help my headache? You'd say, "No. You may have the ibuprofen with you, but it needs to be in you. Take some of those pills, man." And I did, and my headache went away, thank God. But in any case, there's a difference between with you and in you, right? And here, this was gonna be something that was new, not just more of the same from the Old Testament, not just the Spirit acting and working as He always had among this saint and that saint, or other people as well, coming upon them for certain services. No, He was going to be in them. He says, "I will not leave you orphans. I will come to you." And He goes on to say, talks about Him going away. Now, we skip down to verse twenty-five. "These things I've spoken to you while being present with you; but the Helper, the Holy Spirit, whom the Father will send in my name, He will teach you all things and bring to your remembrance all things that I said to you." Now, notice there's a forward look in that verse and a backward look. "He will teach you all things." That's looking forward. There were things, as the Lord would later say to them in John sixteen, He says, "I have many things to say to you, but ye cannot bear them now." So when He sent the Spirit, the Spirit was gonna teach them unrevealed truth, okay? Things that they hadn't learned before. So, if you confine yourself to the Gospels, as some people like to do, you really miss out on a lot of truth God has for the believer. Because He didn't tell the apostles everything when He was on earth. Specifically, He told them it was impossible. They weren't ready, and He hadn't ascended, and the Holy Spirit hadn't come to live within them and equip them to receive it. You know, there are a lot of things I wanna tell my son. I wanna tell my son about what to do when driving a car. I can't tell him yet, he's seven, okay? There's a lot of things that have to happen in him. He's gotta get taller, he's gotta get stronger, he's gotta get more alert, he's gotta work on his powers of concentration, he's certainly gotta mature a whole lot, not to mention chronologically, he has to achieve a certain age according to the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So I have to wait till he's ready to receive what I can tell him. I mean, I can tell him, you know, "Look, we're at a stop sign, look both ways." And if you get there at the same time at a four-way stop, the car on the right, if he gets there at the same time, he's got the right of way. But still be careful, people run stop signs. Or in Philadelphia, there's a nice game they play, how many people can get through on the yellow light, and even who's audacious enough to keep going on the red. So you've gotta kind of drive defensively, don't you? Yeah, there's a lot of things you wanna tell your son or daughter when they're learning to drive, but you just can't tell them at seven. You know, "We're starting on the bike. We're trying to instill some principles, but, man, it's a work in progress." So, the disciples were gonna learn things of the Spirit. But what's more, notice there's a past view in verse twenty-six, "and to bring to your remembrance all things that I said to you." Now, I've had unbelieving friends say to me, when we've witnessed to them, "But how do we know that when these men wrote the Gospels or wrote the Epistles, they didn't forget things?" That's a very good question. I mean, you know, there's a lot of times I've been places away from home, and I write back to my family, and I tell them things, and then I get home and I realize, "Hey, I forgot to tell you this in the letter. By the way, this also happened," you know? Well, how do we know that the apostles forgot something? Well, John himself will tell us at the end of the Gospel of John, that many other signs did Jesus, which are not written in this book. But these are written, that you may believe that He's the Christ, the Son of God, and that believing you might have life through His name. So, the Gospel writers tell us explicitly, and then He says in the next chapter, that if you wrote everything that the Lord did down, the whole world couldn't contain the books. So the Gospels themselves explicitly say, "This isn't everything that happened. This isn't everything that was said. This is a collected digestive material." In other words, God purposefully said, "I want you to write this down, I want you to record this." And how do we know they did it accurately? How do we know they didn't forget something vital? The work of the Holy Spirit in them. "He will bring to your remembrance all things that I said to you." So, we can have confidence in these Bibles, not only on the level of history, that these are historically accurate documents, but they're also divinely inspired. They're also given by inspiration of the Spirit. God breathed through God's Holy Spirit, and that's how we can trust in our Bibles. Now, they were therefore waiting for this, and the Lord also speaks in this passage, by the way. Let me just find the verse. I think I skipped over it. He says, He talks about making His abode in them, that the Father and Son will come and make their abode in them. Verse what? Twenty-three. Thank you very much, gentlemen. I like to crowdsource when I can't find a verse I'm looking right at, thank you. "Jesus answered and said to them, 'If anyone loves Me, he will keep My word, and My Father will love him, and we will come to him and make our home with him,'" where King James says, "We'll make our abode with him." Now, that's a beautiful promise. The triune Godhead, Father and Son, by means of the Spirit are gonna come and make their abode, or their home, in the believer. That word "home" actually only occurs twice in the New Testament, and both times are in this chapter. It's earlier in this chapter when the Lord said, "In My Father's house are many mansions," okay? The word mansion, or abode, or home, is not like the big fancy place you'd see on cribs or something, you know? Not like the big ten thousand square feet mansion with the swimming pool and the tennis courts. It's from an old French word that we bring in, that word in English, mansion. And it was the idea of a home, of a place you could stay in, right? And so, think of it, the Lord says, "In My Father's house are many mansions." We have these homes there. We're going to the Father's house. We're going to have a home there in glory. But until that comes, what do we have? We have the Father, and Son, and Spirit, by means of that indwelling Spirit, coming and making their home in us. Isn't that wonderful? We don't have to wait, in that sense, for the joy of knowing God and interacting with Him till we get to heaven. Eternal life isn't someday when I die, or someday when Jesus comes, I'll get it. No, the moment you believe on Christ, you have it. And there will be things about it you are able to enjoy more after the redemption of the body. But there are also things you can enjoy right now, like the presence of the Lord through His indwelling Holy Spirit. Okay, back to Acts, chapter two then. Now, when the Lord does something new in Scripture, and Pentecost was not only something new, it was something that in one sense was historically unrepeatable. It was a one-off. This is the baptism of the Spirit. Now, a lot of phrases are tossed around and used loosely, and people don't realize, and they will talk about the baptism of the Spirit, and they'll talk about the filling of the Spirit, and they will find out that, or they'll indicate that they're the same thing. That is not so when you carefully study the Scripture. In First Corinthians twelve, we're told that ye have all been baptized into the body of Christ. That is the baptism of the Spirit. And that is what occurred at Pentecost. So, I believe personally, that every time somebody believes on the Lord Jesus Christ, they enter into that baptism of the Spirit that occurred historically. In other words, when that body was formed. Maybe a believer will say, "Well, I believe when they're saved, they're individually baptized." All right, I'm not gonna go to the stake and fight somebody on that, but I think it's the former that we're entering into this historic formation of the body of Christ. When we talk about the filling of the Spirit, however, we're gonna see, even in our study of Acts, that that is something that occurs over and over again. That different men are filled with the Spirit at particular times, or in the general course of their life, it's marked by them being filled with the Spirit. And Ephesians five commands us to be filled with the Spirit, and it contrasts us not to be drunk with wine. So that contrast tells us, the filling of the Spirit has to do with being under the influence of the Spirit, letting the Spirit control us, letting the Spirit especially speak through us. Because in Acts, we're gonna see, when they're filled with the Spirit, it comes out in their mouth, it comes out in their preaching, and what they say to the Lord. That's where the boldness in their witness comes from. The baptism, though, is this historic event that happened at Pentecost, where the body of Christ was formed. Now, when the Lord had transitional periods in Scripture, like this one, we were transitioning from Israel to now something new, the church. And Israel is, pardon me, how the Lord had been working up to this point. You remember, even the apostles in chapter one are still thinking about the Lord restoring the kingdom to Israel. And it hasn't yet dawned, in fact, Acts all the way through, there's gonna be this repeated offering to Israel and to the Jews of the Gospel of the Lord. As Romans one sixteen says, "For I am not ashamed of the power of Christ," because, the Gospel of Christ, excuse me, "because it's the power of God unto salvation, to the Jew first, and also to the Greek." So, the Lord made these promises to the Jews, made them to Israel, and He's going to offer Messiah to Israel first. And we're gonna notice, as a nation, the national leadership, even in the early chapters of Acts, continues to reject Christ. So what happens to them? Well, Romans nine, ten, and eleven, those chapters will explain it. Blindness in part has happened to Israel, that as a nation, they're spiritually blind. Doesn't mean every Jew will remain in spiritual blindness. Many of them, like many Gentiles, come to know the Lord Jesus Christ, even in Acts, we'll see that. But when they come to know the Lord Jesus Christ, it's not like coming to believe in the God of Abraham in the Old Testament. You believe in the God of Abraham, you come attach yourself to Israel. You come identify with that earthly people and with that temple in Jerusalem. But now, we're gonna find out, when you believe on the Lord Jesus Christ, you become part of the one body, and Ephesians two and three make this point, that He's making of twain one new man, that He's broken down the middle wall of partition. That's referring to that wall at the temple that demarcated the court of the Gentiles from the court of the Jews, which was closer in the temple precincts. Now that wall's broken down. Now Jew and Gentile are one in Christ. And God's doing something brand-new. This just isn't something new added on to Israel. This is a brand-new thing that God has had in His mind from eternity past. Only Ephesians three says it's a mystery. It wasn't revealed before, but has now been revealed to the apostles and the prophets. And so, when this day comes, to let people know this is something new going on, it's going to be accompanied by signs and wonders and dramatic phenomenon, and most famously, it's going to be accompanied, here in Acts two, with the speaking of tongues. Which, it's obvious by reading this passage, they were actual languages. You notice the reaction in verse six, "Because everyone heard them speak in his own language; then they were all amazed and marvelled, saying one another, 'Look, are not all these who speak Galileans? And how is it that we hear each in our own language?'" And I believe the word there actually indicates our own dialect. So you can imagine, if they had somebody there preaching in English, he's preaching in the good old Brooklyn accent, okay? You know, and you're like, "Wow, the guy is using slang like they might use in Yonkers, or over in New Jersey, or wherever you hail from. It would sound like one of you. Or he's murdering English syntax like we Pennsylvania Germans do it, you know? Throw grandfather down the stairs at code runs now." But anyway, see, I am bilingual. But any case, this was obviously a miracle of actual languages. Because what passes for tongues nowadays has been proven over and over again not to be real languages. Now, people will try to go to the New Testament and say, "Well, there are different kinds of tongues." Yes, in Acts two, those were real languages. But First Corinthians thirteen speaks about the tongues of men and the tongues of angels. So, when we speak in tongues, we're speaking in the tongues of angels. Well, that doesn't seem to be the indication. First Corinthians fourteen emphasizes the need for an interpreter. And by the way, Brother Randy Amos helped me years ago on this whole issue of tongues. He said, "You know, when somebody wants to come to you trying to say that we should speak in tongues, ask them if they follow the order of First Corinthians fourteen." And it's very instructive. Because you're not to do it for self-edification, first of all. You're to do it for the edification of the body. You're to do it with an interpreter. You're to do it speaking one by one. Not everybody all at once jabbering away, so to speak. You're to do it there, let the prophets speak two or three, and let the rest judge, it says. And also, most tellingly, the women are to keep silent in the churches. Which is something that in every group I've encountered that tries to bring back these sign gifts, they're very big on female participation in their gatherings and women preaching, which the word of God forbids. Now again, God is an anti-woman, and women are a huge part of the witness for the Lord Jesus Christ. But in the public meeting of the church, we gotta follow God's order. And the men are to be the ones who lead vocally and audibly in that situation. Okay, that's a little bit of a side note. But you notice this, an important side note, yeah. And we can talk about it more if you want to at the discussion time, that's fine as well. But you notice this sign provoked amazement, but also perplexity, verse twelve says. "And so some people said, 'What could this mean? And others mocked, saying they're full of new wine.'" Now, I hear people talk someday as if the reason to seek miraculous phenomena, or to have signs and wonders, is because this will be such a potent converting tool for people. People will come to Christ if we do these miraculous phenomena. And it, of course, was not the case in the ministry of the Lord Jesus. When He did signs and wonders, again, He did them perfectly. And you remember, some people were attracted by that and listened to His word, and they believed His word. So yes, some people were saved. But you remember also, others said, "Well, we can't deny He's doing something supernatural, but He's doing it by the power of Beelzebub. He's doing it by demonic power." And interestingly, the Jewish Talmud, a few centuries after the New Testament, preserves this tradition even there. It doesn't talk about Jesus of Nazareth very often, but one of the places where it speaks about Him, it says that He did things by sorcery. So they don't deny that the Lord did miraculous things. But they attribute that, the origin of that power, to Satan, to Beelzebub, the lord of the flies, one of their titles for Satan. So, wonders, in other words, and signs, aren't an infallible guide. If they point you to Christ and the Word, okay, that's useful. But just something that's supernatural isn't useful in and of itself. Because after all, when the man of sin comes, Second Thessalonians two says, "He's going to come with signs and lying wonders." And Revelation thirteen and other passages would bear that out. "He's gonna deceive the nations by miraculous or seemingly miraculous phenomena." So, we have to be careful, and we remember, faith comes by hearing and hearing by the word of God. Everybody who's ever been saved has been saved in any dispensation, right up to the present day, by believing the word of God. Now, the ones who mock said they're full of new wine. So, in the vernacular, these guys are sloshed. They're plastered. You know, they're two sheets to the wind, or three sheets to the wind, whatever people say. They're drunk. But Peter answers that objection. "Standing up with the eleven, he raised his voice and said to them, 'Omen of Judea and all who dwell in Jerusalem, let this be known to you and heed My words; for these are not drunk as you suppose, since it is only the third hour of the day.'" And now, you might say, "Well, what's that have to do with anything? I've come out at six AM or eight AM on my street, and I've seen a drunk lying on the sidewalk. I mean, why should it be anything different that it's only the third hour of the day, or nine AM, I believe, in our timing?" Yep, that's what the marginal reading in the New King James says. So we're gonna go with that, nine AM. So, what's Peter saying here? Well, in the ancient world, the alcoholic content of wine was not as high as it is today. In other words, it wasn't as high a proof as in modern times. There was a monk in Bordeaux in the Middle Ages who happened upon some kind of agrochemical process that really increased the potency of the fermentation process and how much alcohol gets put in the wine. So, I say that to say that it takes a lot less wine today to get someone inebriated than it would have in ancient times. In Proverbs, you get this indication, because it talks about who has redness of eyes, who has all these different... has all these different physiological problems? He that tarries at the wine. He's sitting there with his bowls of wine, and it's implied that this is a process of a long time, that if you're going to get drunk in the ancient world, you have to work at it. You have to, and some people did, of course, and you have to start early and continue late. So Peter's point here is essentially, we haven't been up long enough to imbibe that much wine, you know, to get drunk. This is not drunkenness. But he says, "This is what was spoken by the prophet Joel," and he quotes Joel, chapter 2, "It shall come to pass in the last days," says God, "that I will pour out of my Spirit on all flesh. Your sons and your daughters shall prophesy; your young men shall see visions; your old men shall dream dreams; and on my men servants and on my maidservants I will pour out my Spirit in those days, and they shall prophesy. I will show wonders in heaven above and signs in the earth beneath, blood and fire and vapor of smoke. The sun shall be turned into darkness, and the moon into blood, before the coming of the great and awesome day of the Lord. And it shall come to pass that whoever calls on the name of the Lord shall be saved." So he goes back to the Old Testament prophet of Joel and says, see, this is a sign of the last days. Now you say, well, it's been almost 2,000 years. I thought we were in the last days. Well, indeed, we are, and we may be in the last of the last days. We don't know. The Lord could, in His mercy, have the world go on for another century or more. But it's hard to believe, looking at the state of things. But we just all know, so we can't say when the Lord's coming or when this present order of things will be ended by the events of the tribulation period occurring and then the Lord coming back to set up His kingdom. Uh, but what we do know is that when the New Testament talks about the last days, it sees it as something that started with the coming of the Lord Jesus to this earth and His death and resurrection, that now there's been a change made in human history. You could think about Hebrews 1:1, that says, "God in many parts and in many ways has testified of old to the prophet, uh, through, in the prophets to the fathers, hath in these last days spoken in son." You know, that in the old days, yes, He sent prophets, but now in these last days, we're in the last days. And here Joel was talking about, in the last days, this is what's going to occur. Now, not everything that Joel prophesies happened on the day of Pentecost. You don't see those things in the heavens that he refers to, the blood, fire, vapor of smoke, the moon turned into blood, but we do see those things in Revelation. So we're living in this age, if you will, that starts with this indication from God. Now this is something new. I've now poured out my spirit in a way I never have before. And there's visions, and there's prophecy, and there's greater knowledge of God. And what's that going to culminate in? It's going to culminate in these signs, in the heavens and these wonders, and they're all going to happen at the end of this age, really, at the end of the world as we know it, in what we call, when we divide up prophecy on a timeline, the tribulation. So he goes back to the Old Testament to explain what's happening. And then he brings it up to Christ, verse 22. "Men of Israel, hear these words, Jesus of Nazareth, a man attested by God to you by miracles, wonders, and signs." That's very important. God is a God of evidence. And so God gave the Lord Jesus to do miracles and wonders and signs. Even in John 14, we didn't read it, "But the Lord said to the disciples, 'Believe me; and if you don't believe my words, believe me for the works' sake.'" He said that earlier in John to an unbelieving audience. In other words, look at the signs, see where they point you to. They show that I must be the Son of God. It's sort of like the woman in John 4 saying, "Come see a man who told me everything I ever did." Could this be the Christ? Yeah, she wants people to know it. And what's clued her in was the supernatural knowledge the Lord had of her life and her situation. "While the Jews seek after signs and the Greeks after wisdom," 1 Corinthians 1 says. And Peter here says, "You want signs? The Lord Jesus did them aplenty." And John 12 says, "Though he had did so many signs in their midst, yet they did not believe." That's sad, isn't it? Well, here he's giving them another shot at it. By miracles, wonders, and signs. And just jump over to Hebrews 2 a moment for a cross-reference. Hebrews 2, verse 1. "Therefore we must give the more earnest heed to the things we have heard, lest we drift away; for if the words spoken through angels prove steadfast, and every transgression and disobedience received a just reward, how shall we escape if we neglect so great a salvation, which at the first began to be spoken by the Lord and was confirmed to us by those who heard him?" In other words, by the apostles. "God also bearing witness, both with signs and wonders, and with various miracles and gifts of the Holy Spirit according to his own will." These signs and wonders are associated with the Lord Jesus and His apostles. In fact, you could divide up historically, the times when God has done signs and wonders in groups, you can mostly restrict to three general time periods. Now again, I hasten to add, God is all-powerful. God can do what He wants. God is able to do a miracle anytime He wants. And we also have to be careful of our terminology. Sometimes we refer to God's providence and we call it a miracle. In other words, there's a person diagnosed with cancer, medical science can help them, we pray, they go to the doctor, the tumor has disappeared, they're not under threat. We say it's a miracle. Well, really, it's the providence of God, okay? It may be, uh, I mean, it is certainly in its way miraculous, but we say, you know, something unlikely happens. I'm wrongfully accused and I'm put in prison, but suddenly, through some dramatic way, a pardon arrives. We say it's a miracle. Really, it's a providence. It's God working in time and space and circumstance to bring about His will. But God can still do miracles, I'm just making that point. Now, when He did them in clusters and groups, however, you're... you're